Thank you everybody, please be seated. Thank you. Can we just ask all the phones to switch to silent please? Or switched off. Do we have any apologies for absence? I've got councillors Brown, Clark, Hargreaves, Geoffrey, Ryder and White. Is there any more please? Yep.
Thor Thompson please, Justin Thompson and councillor Oliver.
Yep. No. No, I'm broke, yeah. Right, okay, thank you. Right, the green, the green forms going around, if anyone's got any declarations of interest to sign please. Can we move on to the minutes of the meeting held on the fourteenth of November? Are they okay? Have they proposed yet? Do you have a second there? Yeah, thank you. I move on, just to note the attendance matrix from the last meeting. Just move on to my announcements now, just to update yous all that. Despite the terrible weather, the other Saturday, I, my Christmas carol concert went ahead. Thank you to everyone who turned out, it was a very good time considering how bad it was. And we raised over six hundred pounds, so thank you very much for everyone who made donations. Just to let you know, if you don't know, I'm gonna do the Boxing Day Dip for my sins. Any donations will be very much appreciated. And I've now attended over ninety civic engagements since I became mayor in May. And finally, I would like to wish you all a very happy Christmas and all the best for 2025. Moving on to the announcement from the leader. Councillor Richardson, because he's not here, you're gonna, you're gonna take over here, make a statement there, thank you.
I would like to thank our frontline staff who kept residents safe during Storm Dara. The gale-force winds and torrential rain caused problems across the borough and our staff worked throughout the weekend. A special mention goes to highways, neighbourhoods, street scene and tree teams who did a fantastic job in the most difficult conditions. They really did go the extra mile to make our borough a safer place. Gale-force winds also meant we had to cancel the Christmas light switch on in Parade, in Redcar. Thankfully, great Christmas events have gone ahead across our borough and I'd like to pay tribute to all those who gave up their time and put in a huge amount of effort to make sure they were a real success. You may have seen the publicity around the disturbing case where one of our school-crossing patrol officers was put in danger by a motorist who sped towards her as she was walking on the road. It's hard to understand why anyone would do that and thankfully no children were on the road and no one was injured. A court took what happened very seriously and fined the motorist more than a thousand pounds and added six points to his licence. Hopefully this sends a message to anyone who doesn't respect the great job our school-crossing patrols do. The project led by members and including officers in the wider community to reduce fly tipping in Carling How continues to be a success. Significant efforts have gone into demonstrating the benefits of a clean and pleasant environment since the project was launched in May this year. As part of the project, schoolchildren have been learning about the harms of fly tipping and the benefits of recycling. Well done to everyone involved in the project. And finally, grants are available for groups to create community orchards in the borough for people to enjoy for generations to come. Groups can apply to create community orchards that are easily accessible to the public and the scheme funds projects between two hundred and five thousand pounds and will pay for items including trees, tree protection, commemorative signage and fencing gates. It would be great if we could spread the word about this great opportunity and make our borough a more attractive place. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more announcements from the cabinet members? Yep, councillors.
Yeah, I nearly forgot then. Just a, just a quick one, we've got this fantastic calendar and if anybody wants any of these, then Karen's got some to spare, you can see her after, thank you.
Thank you for that. Moving on to the managing director, any announcements for the managing director? Thank you. We've got no questions from the public, so we'll move on to councillor Massey to move the report, financial update, quarter two, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. So, members will be aware that the cabinet presents quarterly updates about the financial position. The decisions that are made in these reports are usually cabinet-only decisions. However, because there is a change to some of the borrowing requirements of the council, this report has come at full council, so you'll notice in your agenda pack on page twenty-five, there's a bit in bold. It's the bit in bold that we're here to discuss, and that is to borrow an additional 1.605 million for the purchase of vehicles. So in essence, we have thirty-five council vehicles at the moment that are being hired. We hire them from private providers. We're seeking to replace those hired vehicles by purchasing our own vehicles and we estimate this is gonna save four hundred and thirty-seven thousand pounds over the lifespan of those vehicles, which we estimate will be seven years. So the reason it's come at full council is because of the additional borrowing requirement, but we think that this investment will pay for itself and indeed, we'll be four hundred and thirty-seven thousand pounds better off by making this decision than we would if we continue to hire vehicles. So I move the report, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a second there? Thank you. The report's open for debate, any questions? No? Right, we wanna go to the, you press your button. Councillor Martin.
Yeah, just a quick question, obviously the savings involved, does this include interest on the loan?
Councillor Martin, can you stand up please when you speak? Thank you.
Yes, so both sides of the equation are taking into account any of the additional costs that occur. So for instance, with our, for the charge that we're looking at purchasing the vehicles, it also includes what we think it will cost to maintain the vehicles. For the charge, it will also include what we think that the loan is gonna cost us in terms of interest. If and when we need to borrow for this, the council does borrow from itself occasionally, it's a complex capital programme. But in essence, after all the sums are done, it's four hundred and thirty-seven, that's the simple version. Thanks Stephen. Councillor Martin, sorry.
Thank you. Councillor Nightingale, it's not a question-and-answer, it's a debate, but councillor Nightingale.
The way my budget is skewed in terms of having to, because of the lack of grants, having to put round about sixty percent into social services. And in view of the cost of borrowing, which has just been raised, and in view of the fact that we are expecting to be provided with details of extra funding from the new Labour government, would councillor Massey please tell, give us any updates? One, on whether he has received information about the settlement. Two, what prospect it has for easing the burden on the budget this year and in the next few years.
Do we have any more questions? That's it? Right, councillor Davies.
In their way, you've got the four hundred and thirty-seven thousand pound a year figure form. Is that just what we're spending on repairs and such now? Because I don't know if anyone else has had a new car in the last couple of years, but you still need to spend money on maintaining that vehicle. So if we're just taking that figure off what we're spending in maintenance and stuff this year, then obviously we are still gonna be spending stuff maintaining these new vehicles in the coming years. So is it, is it, is it that or some other way of accounting it?
Thank you. Councillor Massey to someone, please.
Yes, thanks for keeping me right, Mr Mayor. So in essence, for councillor Nightingale's question, the settlement was due yesterday, so we're still filtering what that means for the council. But as we said when we talked about this in the scrutiny meetings that I know you chaired, in essence, if we get additional money from the government, which we're hopeful that we will, I think that most of the additional money would probably come not this financial year but next, in terms of the government talking about rebasing how it funds local government with areas like ours potentially being beneficiaries to that. If we do get anything in this or the next financial year, because of the circumstances the local authority is in, it's likely to only lessen savings that we have to meet rather than allow us to do more things. So you'll notice that the budget that's being proposed for consultation has eight point eight million pounds of savings or cuts within it. It could potentially lessen some of the impact of those things if we got additional money. But also, it's to be mindful of the fact that within our consulted budget that's out for consultation at the moment, you'll also see in the medium-term position just how difficult the finances of the council will be over the next couple of years, until hopefully we get the TES Works benefits a bit further into the future, maybe in two, three, four years, we'll start to see that benefit. In one or two years, the benefits from TES Works are quite small at this point, not to say they're not benefits, but they've not all been realised. So in essence, we are running the reserves of the council down to lower levels than I think any of us would like. If we can get additional money from the government, it will stop us having to do that. So that answers that question. In terms of the vehicle charges for councillor Davies, so we estimate that it would have cost us, if we continue with the hire arrangements, two point two five million pounds over the next seven years in total. However, we think from buying the vehicles, it's going to cost us a net of one point eight million pounds. And that net is made up of the fact that it's gonna cost us one point six million to buy the vehicles. We're putting aside naught point, roughly speaking, naught point two million pounds for parts and labour to fix the vehicles and another naught point two million for interest. And the net is about one point eight, which means that the saving is about four, three, seven K or thereabouts. This has been a long-term piece of work the council has been working on for a while. I think it's a decision we would be making regardless of the financial circumstances of the council. It is a sensible business decision that we should be making, it saves us money. If you can afford to buy your car, you tend to buy your car rather than hire it. If the council even has to borrow for this, even with the interest cost, if it can still make a saving, it's a sensible thing to do. So I commend that to the council.
Thank you. All those in favour, please show. That's Carrie, thank you. Move on to the report from the cabinet member for economic growth, councillor Pallister.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I just say before I start that I've lost my hearing aid? I haven't got a job, so the job hasn't filled them up, both have gone. And I can't find them, I've looked all over, the weather when I got in the shower, they're not there now. So you, you will have to speak up. So I'll do my best to hear what you're saying, but I might say, can you, can you repeat that? So, so the report provides the Borough Council with the key progress made within the growth and enterprise portfolio and the challenges to date since January twenty twenty-four. So I'd first like to thank the team in the Growth Directorate who have worked hard to deliver a range of programmes from Investment Help Places, Eston Saltburn, Gisborough and Loftus and Redcar. To planning and development, supporting and growing our businesses and delivering employment and skills. Throughout twenty twenty-four, the service has wrestled with many issues. Some of these are increased energy costs, rampant inflation, loss of T2, T2 contracts and the cost of acquisitions, which we know very well in, in Eston. All of which impact on our place development programmes across the borough. Despite the team's best efforts to regenerate our towns and district centres, like other places, we still have issues with empty shops that blight our high streets. I've asked the team within the Growth Directorate to consider a long-term solution. Officers are currently looking at external funding opportunities to develop a master plan starting with Redcar. We're also looking at new powers to tackle shops lying empty through the high street rental auctions. Last year I reported it was our golden opportunity to build a skills workforce with over ten thousand or more new jobs coming into the borough over the next decade. I currently sit on the Tees Valley Combined Authority Education Employees and Skills Advisory Committee. Doesn't make the decisions, but it is an advisory committee. One of the key concerns raised has been the need to focus on skills planning, not just for established businesses, but to be ready for the incoming investors and supply chains. Work is now being done to update the skills analysis, understand the future investment opportunities, map delivery of current skills programmes, understand the next round of funding programmes from adult skills provision, what comes after the UK Shared Prosperity Fund and other new programmes such as the Youth Trail Blazer and Connect2work. Members will see on paragraph eight, three and eight, four, the main report, the large-scale investment coming into this borough. This is bolstered by the recent announcement of another four million investment in net zero power, carbon capture and storage project. Furthermore, recently, just house building programmes in nineteen five million homes over the next five years will mean we need to train more bricklayers, joiners, plumbers, roofers and so on. Places will be created across the country with a hundred and forty construction hubs. Tees Valley Combined Authority will also receive five million for the youth trail scheme, helping young people who are falling out of education and training. I'm pleased to report that we have some of the best learning facilities in the country as well as strong leadership. Forward. Last Tuesday, I was invited to look at the new welding and scaffolding facility at Redcar College and last year visited the green energy training hub. Having first-class facilities on our doorstep means our young people and adults are offered training that provides the skills they need for employment in many of the well-paid growth industries. However, we still need to have better coordination and use of resources between Tees Valley Combined Authority and other key stakeholders. We also need more flexibility on various funding pots. Over the last twelve months, the Adult Learning Service has given support to one thousand two hundred and four local residents, delivering courses in English, maths, digital skills, ESOL and bespoke courses for businesses helping them to access employment opportunities. The Grangetown Hub has also continued to offer assistance to a thousand unemployed local people with two hundred and eighty-two of them moving into employment. In twenty twenty-five, we will be opening the new employment hub at Temperance Square in Loftus as a sister site to Grangetown, giving the service a dedicated presence in East Cleveland. There has been some challenges within the Adult Education Service. Following an Ofsted inspection of the service carried out last December, we were given an inadequate assessment. We've taken swift action and I'm quietly confident we're on our journey to achieving at least good. The service has been regularly inspected throughout twenty twenty-four by Ofsted and the government's FE Commissioners. Both have reported back that the changes we've made to the service are having a positive impact on the quality of teaching and learning. Given I've only got ten minutes, I just want to touch on the government's recent announcement changes to the planning system on the twelfth of December. In short, we must plan for an increase in house building and the report does say six four, six hundred and forty-two, but the figure confirmed by government is five, six, nine. This means we will need to prepare a new local plan which seeks to build eight thousand three hundred and eighty-five new houses over the next fifteen years. Without preempting what will be in the new local plan, I'm pleased more funding will be given to social housing providers through the new Housing Accelerator Programme. Funding can also be kept by councils by right-to-buy. There'll also be a need to reform planning to speed up green energy projects, so we're less reliant on gas. Sorry. So it's already going to be challenging to hit net zero two fifty. Private investors, if we don't move quickly, will move to other more ambitious countries. I will bring a report on the eighteenth of March twenty-five, which will set out the council's timetable for delivering a new local plan that will satisfy all asks from government. At this stage, bearing in mind, we only received it on the twelfth of December. In the meantime, the council has continued to significantly outperform existing housing targets. Last year, we built four hundred and seventy-one against a target of two hundred and thirty-four. A meeting with the MP Anna Turley tomorrow to discuss the new NPPF and timescales for the new local plan. March twenty twenty-five will not only be able to demonstrate a five-year, sorry, but if we can't demonstrate by March twenty twenty-five, which we won't, we will not be able to demonstrate a five-year land supply. This will be a risk if developers submit planning applications to land outside our current developments. This year, we have a number of strategies to develop. We have the local plan, the housing strategy, the skills strategy and the growth strategy. I look forward to working across Directories, Cabinet with all elected members, key partners and local communities to ensure strategies, improve the quality of life for people across our borough and unmove the report.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers? So move on to, quite a few more. Councillor Kerr, please.
Thank you Chair. Thank you councillor Pallister. Can you hear me okay? Just about. Thank you for a very digestible report. The huge workloads are acknowledged. I was going to ask a question about the local plan and I know, I know you've covered it in a little bit of detail there. The current one is seven years old. Now the guidance, as we move into next year, it's seven years old. The guidance says it should be reviewed every five years. Now, without a detailed local policy that tells us what local development should look like, it does feel like we are vulnerable. So I was going to ask how we can prioritise that, the development of the new plan and maybe bring forward that timescale that you've outlined in the report. So that was one question. Shall I carry on? I've got five in total, but I will be quick. Yeah, shall I carry on? I've said it all now, I'll carry on, that's okay. Yeah, okay. No, sorry.
No.
So, sorry Lynn, I need to carry on, okay.
You need to carry on because you can't, you can't get another second.
Housing strategy, yeah? Page thirty-one, housing strategy. You mentioned three principles. I'm wondering if we can consider a fourth principle, which is around the role of housing strategy in rejuvenating town centres. It links to what you have said about empty properties, yeah, okay. And, and the empty properties is a problem that's highly likely to worsen. In twenty twenty-one, only thirty-four percent of our housing sign-offs were on previously developed land. So such a policy would help us to improve that performance, potentially by developing previously developed properties, yeah? Okay, so and linked sticking with town centres on page thirty-five. We've had nine applications for shopfront grants in Gisborough out of sixty-four expressions of interest. So not that great. At the last regen meeting, we had some ideas about how we might be able to remove the barriers for applicants. So I'm wondering if those have been able to be implemented and whether we have had any more applications so far. Maybe not, maybe it's a bit soon. Bakehouse Square, okay, sorry. Now, you don't need me to tell you, it's caused significant reputational damage to the council. And we have had some assurance how the mistakes can be avoided in the future. Looking at the extensive list of capital programmes on page thirty-three, I still have some concerns about our capacity to deliver. Could you possibly say something about what you have put in place to avoid the repeat of what's happened this year in Gisborough? Thank you. And then very briefly, on page forty finally, section two, one, five notices. Do you know how many we have issued? Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Pallister, please.
So, right, so the local plan, yeah. So yeah, they, they do take far too long, don't they, to, to develop? I mean, the, the original date I was given that it could be thirty months. The quickest, I have asked how quick could we potentially do one? And I don't think we're gonna be able to do one less than eighteen to twenty-four months and that's at speed. So, you know, in answer to your question, I have asked officers to go and do work behind the scenes, which will speed it up. Whereas our science, but again, we're waiting for the direction with the local, the, the new NPPF. So, yes, we'll do it as, as quickly as we can. Obviously, we don't wanna be held to ransom by developers because it will be out of date by March twenty twenty-five. And I know you do say seven year, but my information is it's twenty twenty-five, it's out of date. But we should, to be fair, when you think about it now, we should have started it. But this last twelve months, we've been told if we start it, it probably won't be accepted because of the new rules that are coming in by this government. So we were advised constantly not to do that. The housing strategy in terms of using properties on high streets and that, we have done some work already and there's no reason why we can't continue. I think it's a great idea, to be fair. Some of our town centres, we've got the top end of Redcar, you're probably gonna be looking at more culture and, and housing up that top end than, than your shop units. But, you know, we, we're open to see what, what we can use the best use. We've done it in Loftus. We brought some of the shops in Loftus into residential property, so it can be done. There's no law to, to tell us. Obviously, it all depends on where the different funding's gonna come from. And what was the next one, sorry? Previous development, yeah. On nine applications in Gisborough and sixty-four expressions of interest. Yeah, I've asked, I have asked the same question. And again, the information that I'm getting is they put the expression of interest in, but then when they go back to them, the, the main delay that apparently is happening is they can't get three quotes. So we are trying to say, well, you don't have to have three quotes, try two. So there's, there's things that we're doing to remove them barriers to people wanting to, to take opportunity of the grants, but they're not, they're not able to get. That's the main reason, as far as I know. I'm not sure if there's any other reasons other than, you know, is, that, that's the one that I'm, I'm being told by officers. But I will keep pushing because I do think there's, yeah, the, it's, it's gonna be great for, for Gisborough. We've just took the camp through Cabinet and Conservation Area Management Plan. You know, it all fits in together, so hopefully we'll get more businesses coming forward and we'll be able to process them. And Bakehouse Square, I, I acknowledge, you know, and apologise, I suppose, for, for the poor quality of work on Bakehouse Square and what members in Gisborough have had to go through at times with Facebook and, you know, being challenged by certain individuals as well. What I do thank the Gisborough members for as well is their engagement with, with myself and officers. I mean, we've had several catch-ups, we've had walkabouts. I don't believe that the Westgate and the Challander, Challander Street Development Phase Two, I don't think we're gonna see any, hopefully, fingers crossed, we're gonna see any problems. I think we've got the capacity to deliver. We've, we've learnt, we have learnt from the mistakes. And so, you know, I, I think, I think it'll be fine, she says. In fact, I'm fairly confident it will be. And I'm not sure, our two one five notices. I did ask this question, but I haven't, haven't brought the answer with me. I can't remember, but what I can say is you will see in the report that our planning enforcement officer's been on long-term sick. So I'm sure that has caused a backlog, well, it has caused a backlog. So in January, we will have a new planning enforcement officer. We're not saying that the, the, the officer that's on sick, long-term sick, isn't coming back. But we will definitely have a, a, a planning enforcement officer because it can't, can't go on. What's happening is the planning team are trying to cover the ones with high-risk issues. But, you know, we are receiving, we have, we have got a backlog. I think that's answered them all, thanks, Chair.
Thank you for that. Just to let councillors know, I've got ten councillors waiting to speak. So if anyone else wants to speak, if you press the button now, because I'm not going to take no more because you're only supposed to have, only supposed to have ten minutes. I can't wait, so we could be here all night. So I'll move on to the deputy mayor, please.
Thank you councillor Pallister for your report. How do you justify the words planning, development and housing when the government is removing your ability to make the right decisions? And we are not going to start a new local plan? Sorry. I'll read it again. How do we, how do you justify the words planning, development and housing when the government is removing your ability to make the right decisions? And we are not going to start the local plan or housing strategy until this time next year? Thank you.
Councillor Pallister, please. Did you get that?
Justify the planning, development and housing strategy. I've got that bit. This, I'm sorry about this, I apologize for this. And what was the next bit? What? So how do I justify the planning, development and housing strategy? Yeah, get that?
When the government is removing your ability to make the right decisions and we are not going to start the new local plan or housing strategy until this time next year?
Right, well, well, it's twelfth of December, we've got, we've got the NPPF, haven't we? So tomorrow, I've got a meeting with Anna Turley, the MP, and officers to, to have a little bit more discussion because you, you, obviously, it's six, it's six days since we've received it. I am concerned that it may take powers away from the planning, local planning authority. But I need to digest it more because I'm not sure exactly big, which happens now, big strategic developments, we know, doesn't, doesn't, you know, the government can, can, can award them without even, even having to come to planning committee. But if you want me to explain that further, I think we, I need to digest that more with officers, with the MP. Have a real look through it and see what powers we maybe haven't taken away and what we, what we can still have within our own regulatory committee. I'm not sure yet, so I can't answer that. In terms of the local plan, I think we've had that discussion earlier. Had there been a not, had there been not a new government come in in July and we probably could have started it earlier? I'm not, all I can say is it's not for the want of want, not want a local plan earlier. We probably should have had one, but we haven't. We are where we are. Probably should have been started the last administration, to be fair. We've come into this administration, we've been told we can't do it, we'll wait for new legislation. And unfortunately, and that's from both, that's from the previous government as well. So that's where, we are where we are. It's not, we're not in a good place, I'll be honest. There's, there's, there's not just this council, other councils haven't got local plans in place. There's nothing we can do apart from speed it up as quick as we can. And I can't answer it any more than that.
Thank you. Councillor Hanaway, please. Councillor Hanaway, can you talk into the mic and loud? I know councillor Colly's going to assist councillor Pallister, but just to help you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your report. Can you hear me all right? Excellent, thank you. I've got three questions. First of all, paragraph two point three. Where it says there are still issues with empty retail units and we need to consider a longer-term solution. Officers are currently looking at external funding opportunities to develop a master plan, starting with? Redcar. You know how it makes an East Cleveland councillor groan to hear of yet another plan, starting with Redcar? There have been quite a number of them. A lot of funding has been spent since the early years of this century. It hasn't yet delivered a thriving town, perhaps, perhaps the latest ones will. But obviously, getting that external funding takes a lot of officer time. And it would be good to see that shared around a bit more. So could you start with somewhere else? Please, a- a- anywhere, anywhere will do. Thank you. Secondly, two point five, the ten thousand new jobs that are coming into the borough. Now, I'm, I sit on the TVCA scrutiny and overview committee, where there is often a very heated tribal, you know, back and forth about job figures in the TVCA strategic plan. But it's a bit different now because the officers themselves in the TVCA are saying that ten thousand jobs have already been created. And they think there's been some under-reporting, so it might even be more. So if, has the TVCA Employment and Skills Committee been told that? And do they know what the response has already been in terms of skill development? And how much of that has happened in, in Redcar and Cleveland? And my third question is, did you check the shower drain filter for your hearing aids? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor?
Thanks for your questions. And, right, why Redcar? So Redcar, this is, this is another master plan, to be fair, for the whole of, of Redcar, like we have done through the town dealing. This is a master plan for empty shop units and Redcar has the most empty shop units. So this is why we're targeting Redcar. That doesn't mean that we're leaving other areas out, you know, there's other areas. Eston's got a lot of shop units, but we are doing work through the level, level up fund. Gisborough, we're doing work through the level and up fund. Saltburn actually has got the least empty shops, I'd be pleased to know. And so we're targeting Redcar because it's the area that has the most empty shop units. That's the reason. And it is a master plan on that specific area. So the Tees Valley Convent, ten thousand jobs, yeah, there's a lot of, lot of discussion around is, is it ten thousand? Is it more than ten thousand? It, I think it will eventually, over the long term, obviously be more than ten thousand. But we have discussed how many jobs, but to be, to be fair, I'd be wrong to tell you a figure because I can't remember and I don't know the exact figure to date, what we have. But I will send you it. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Councillor Pugh, please.
And, is it on? There we go. And thank you councillor Pallister for your report. If you can't hear me, just let me know and I'll try and speak up. Let me take the opportunity as well, on behalf of the Conservative Group, to commend you for your work as, as cabinet member for, for growth. I know you've been very attentive with the councillors in Gisborough over what's gone on there. We, we do really appreciate it and we know how much you care about the work you do. I could ask a myriad of questions, like councillor Kirk did, but I'll try and limit the number I'm asking today. The first one is again about housing targets because we know they've increased exponentially. You know, new houses is a good thing, but it's, it's quite unbelievable, the number we're being asked to, allowed to be built here. So my question is, you know, where do you, I'm not asking you to write the local plan now, that's completely unfair, but where do we envisage that many houses going? I have the number down here, obviously, six hundred and forty-two, that's been revised to the number you stated. But even so, nearly six hundred houses. Our planning department has been cut over the last decade. Can it cope with that many planning applications, do you think, that, every single year? And another subject, it's, it's not really relevant to my ward, but something I'm, I'm interested in. There's talk of redevelopment, Redcar Central Station in the report. This has been going on for years now. And from my understanding, we've had money allocated for it time. And again, whether it was from the TVCA in the same band of funding that brought us the new Regent Cinema, I think there's money available, made available all the way back then. And yet we're still talking about work beginning and there doesn't really seem to be a lot of work going on. So I'm just wondering if you can give an update on Redcar Central Station? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Pallister, please.
Right, yeah, thank you. So housing target, Chair, we, we, we are, I mean, I'm pleased that it's gone down a little bit, to be fair. I think we would have struggled. And so we did, we did four, seven, one, we built last year. So what's that? Math's eighty, eighty-eight more if we added that on this year. But that's, that's over, you know, we've got to keep doing this. So it, it does mount up to a lot of houses. I don't think, I mean, what I'm pleased about, what I'm really pleased about is the fact that in the local plan, it does say that we need to build more social housing and they are giving five hundred million to social housing providers through the Housing Accelerator Programme. So I'm really, really pleased about that. And, but I think the other issue we all have, don't we? I mean, we talk about it in regulatory committee, is the infrastructure. So, you know, again, this is all, it's, it's all coming quite fast, the information. But there's, there's, there looks like there's going to be a, a cross-party cabinet infrastructure team. So I'm hoping what comes from that is they then look at how difficult it is for communities. I mean, I know you've got a question, it's the planning applications coming to regulatory committees, I won't comment on it. I know you've got a question about, you know, the, the congestion on roads, Gisborough, other places. It's not always against the housing developments, it's against the, it's the worry against the infrastructure. And, and I suppose the other thing, I, I will make the comment now because we're talking about housing, is the fact that another positive that's coming for it, from it, is to make sure and, you know, we need to do this in our local plan, that our housing is designed better and it's energy efficient. So, you know, that, that's two bonuses, I suppose. And, right, the, the other one, planning department's been cut. And there's been no cuts to the planning department since we took over. I'm not sure if there was before, but there hasn't been. So there is, there is some funding. I know there is some funding coming and I've asked officers whether we'll benefit from that because of the increase in housing targets. At the moment, it doesn't look like it, it will. So I'm not sure with the, the financial situation we're in, we're going to be able to in, increase any, any officers in the planning department. But there again, we are going to have to have a sum put away to support the local plan. So that could be, we'll have to bring other, other consultants in as well. So it won't just be our officers doing that. So there will have to be a budget set aside for the local plan. And Central Station, I've been to visit it, it's, it's moving, you know, it's, it's on target. We're, I mean, I can't wait to see it. I think it'll be absolutely brilliant once it's all developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Salvin, please.
I'll try my best, being six foot, Lynne. Yeah, I'd just like to declare an interest in that my company is mentioned in this report. It doesn't really affect what I'm about to ask, but I just thought I'd, I'd put that out there. And, yeah, thanks for the report councillor Pallister, much appreciated. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Christmas as well. I did find it interesting about stuff in the report that wasn't mentioned. And in section eight point three, it mentions the electric arc furnace as having planning permission granted, but no work having yet commenced. And I'm wondering, with the government's lack of support on the project, will it ever commence? Now, if you remember, in March this year, I brought a motion to full council to push forward a planning decision and seek approval for the electric arc furnace sooner than was originally granted, sooner than was granted, which received almost unanimous backing in this chamber. The reasoning behind that motion was to get ahead of Scunthorpe and to give Teeside a chance. And I know at the time, and he's not here today, but I had a, as group leader myself at the time, I had a few phone calls with councillor Browning and those were his concerns as well. I do, however, also share Mayor Ben O'Shaughnessy's concerns that this project may never happen and Teeside may never return, steel may never return to Teeside, with spades ready to go into the ground as soon as the government backs the project. Why are Labour once again turning their back on steelmaking on Teeside? It's so frustrating. And so my question, Mr Mayor, is this. Given the fact that our local Labour MPs haven't even bothered to respond to Mayor Ben O'Shaughnessy's letter he recently sent about the arc furnace, I think it's, I think it's imperative that the portfolio holder, portfolio holder does ask the tough questions that need to be asked with this meeting with MP Anna Turley tomorrow. And, yeah, I'd just, I'd just like to know her views on this and will she strive to do everything she can to get steelmaking back on Teeside? Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Pallister, please.
Yeah, all right, yeah. Right, so. So, yeah, I can remember that, that motion that come to for council to speed the planning decision. And, you know, sometimes you make, you make choices in the chamber that you then regret making. I wish I'd have supported councillor Leroy, to be fair. Because I think, you know, we didn't have to speed it up. You know, there was no, there was no reason why we couldn't wait. And like other developments, the time that it should have been through normal planning processes. But it's gone and, and we are where we are. So why is it, I'm going to have to sit down a minute. So why is it that we're waiting for it to, to be developed? It's nothing to do with the council, it's to do with the investors. So the government are trying to talk with the Chinese, they've been over, you're seeing Keir Starmer over there not that long ago. They are offering investment, but the, the stall, stalling of that development is the Chi, is the Chinese. Nothing to do with the Labour government. However, that was only outline planning. So, you know, even if they do come forward with the funding, and they will after, there will be a few under, under-reserved matters. There are some conditions that they need to adhere to. And until they do that as well, then, you know, there'll be no electric arc. I hope there will be. There's two point five million from the government going into steel. And I think, you know, we also need to look at primary steel. Yes, there won't be no blast furnaces, but we have, we need to look at, there's, there's other ways, there's other ways of developing primary, primary steel that is greener and not just electric arc. So, you know, your question really is, it's not anything to do with the government. Anna had a steel summit not that long ago. We're in the hands of the Chinese. But they will have to come back to planning because there's a couple of issues that need to be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davies, please.
Mr Mayor, I think I'm quite loud anyway, Lynne, so if you struggle to hear me while I'm talking, then we'll, we'll have to find a way of moving you closer. It's all right. Right, Lynne, thank you for the report. I'll start with the fact that everything that I'm about to say today, I would have asked in scrutiny to you. All of these questions were asked in scrutiny. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get answers on them. Because sadly, it's the one thing that you're letting down. At the end of the day, scrutiny is there. At the end of the day, scrutiny is there for us to hold, the decision makers to account. And there's been too many meetings that you have not attended. And sadly, at the last meeting, there was no one there representing cabinet in a scrutiny meeting, which I think is a bit shameful. First of all, Mrs Easton, who lives next door to the Arlington church site that's been demolished, is still waiting for someone in your team to settle a dispute and a payout for compensation in relation to the party wall agreements which the council signed last year. Bearing in mind that this old lady is in poor health, I think it's an absolute travesty that someone who has not only suffered with the loss of the winter fuel allowance from your government, also is now being told she's going to have to wait for this settlement because it's not getting sorted quick enough. The next part, because I'm just going to swizz through these dead quickly because unfortunately we haven't got enough time. Are you able to give us an update on where we are with the Cotum Arena? Where we are with this and is it still going ahead? Seems to have all gone quiet since the election, when all the promises were getting made. The adult learning service, I look forward to reading the action plan on how we're going to be turning around our inadequate reports. The main part is that I asked in scrutiny at the last meeting, was the missing sandstone from all the projects that have been going on in Loftus. The council had an informal agreement with ICL Bowlby while the future High Street works were going on at Station Yard, which we used, or the council used, the former railway station site to house and store stone from historic buildings that we were taking down so that we could reuse them, so that we weren't having to fork out loads of money for new stone. And bearing in mind, this was stone that's been in the town for generations, it's something that could have been used elsewhere. So it's, and it was also a key site for the train project, which hopefully would have brought trains back into East Cleveland. Somehow ICL Bowlby relationship has soured over the recent years. Because the site was sold beneath us to a private individual, whom then demanded immediate clearance of that stone from Station Yard with only seven days' notice to this council. Otherwise fees would be attached. Now, the council tried to clear some of that stone, but clearly there was far too much there for us to be able to do anything in the seven days that were given to us. So nowhere near a reasonable amount was, was taken out. And because it was such short notice, the council ended up dumping it at the only site that we could think of at the time, which was behind the swimming baths, which was the site of the former Loftus tip, for those that maybe know where the old Loftus tip used to be. So it's not a secure area, there's no fencing around it, there's a gate which anyone can walk through it. If you've got some light enough vehicle, you might even be able to get it up there. So the stone that we did take up there, which was just sprawled over the site, has either been sort of nabbed away at by the locals or people have known it's there and they've gone with the wheelbarrows and vehicles and taken some more out. So what started off as a lovely stored area of future project work and stone and cobbles and things from all the projects that we've been doing in Loftus, we've probably ended up with a handful of some broken sandstone blocks, which will be no use or ornament for anything. And, and the worst thing about all this is that the biggest amount of stone is now in the hands of a public or, a private owner for the site that we should have been doing more to take over and control, subsequently ended up on a, on a site on the internet for sale. So you can understand the uproar and the fury from local residents finding out that the stone used from Loftus, well, taken from Loftus buildings and Loftus sites is appeared for sale by the person who seems to be the only person in the whole of Loftus that's made money out of the regeneration works in Loftus. Can you tell us what has happened here, how it's happened? And how are you going, or what are you going to do about it? Because ultimately, the public deserve answers for what's gone wrong here. And if I've got enough time, Mr Mayor, I just also want 10 seconds, seven. I just want to second, second the gentleman's thing about steel working. I think it's a travesty that this country is not going to be able to make its own steel and fight its own wars. And if that's the state of play by any government, and that goes for the ones before as well, if we can't make things to go to war and we ever go to war, God help this country.
Thank you. councillor Pallister, please.
Mrs, Mrs Easton, officers are working with Mrs Easton. And there should be, it should be concluded early in the new year. The sandstone hasn't been sold off. I know the Chair of your regeneration group did request that we should sell it off, but it hasn't. It's gone to social enterprises in the community, it's gone to the community woodland, and the rest of it is stored away. So it certainly hasn't been sold off. The other one was, which was that? Oh, update on the arena. I mean, we've done, you know, you know this, you're asking a question, you already know. We've done all we can, the lead has been working with Cotum Arena Limited, and it is now up to them. So I'm not going to stand here and say what else shall we do? The timescale of that, I think they've got, how long have they got left now? We give them two years, was it? Yeah, so the ball's in their court, so we've done everything we can. Adult, yeah, the adult learning report, yeah, of course, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to bring reports through scrutiny and any other committee, cabinet, council, whoever, scrutiny. Yeah, well, I'll leave that one to last, the attendance. So, I mean, I thought you'd mentioned the Industrial Communities Alliance as well, to be honest. You let, you left that one out, didn't you? So anyway, so, so there's reasons for it. And do you know what, if this was coming from councillor Thompson, I'd accept it more. You need to look in the mirror, mate. You need to look in the mirror when it comes to attendance.
Two sentences, there's a question to answer, you've asked your question, you're getting answered, just accept the question. You're not, no, you're not. No, sit down. Do you know, she's answering the question. You've asked a question, she's answering the question. Sit down, please. Councillor, she's answering the question, because you've asked a question. Councillor Pallister, please. Councillor Davies, please, will you let, will you let councillor Pallister answer the question?
So yes, some, I mean, I mean, you, you have other commitments, don't you? Sometimes I'm at meetings that I think are more productive for this council than being at scrutiny. Sometimes I have to stay at work because I've got a funder and jobs rely on that. So I think, where can I be? Do I let jobs go? Do I let a project go? Or do I sit at scrutiny? Where I can answer questions through emails or any time you want me to. I can come out and visit you, can talk to Mrs Easton, I'll do anything. But sometimes on that day, I can't. I might be bad, my family might be bad, and they come first. But you don't always have to be sat at, but take for instance, the Industrial Communities Alliance. You can go there, takes you two days for two hours. I finally got them to have meetings online. When they're online, I'm attending, I do attend when I can, but very rarely. But I'll tell you what I have done, I've done things that didn't need to be there, that have made a difference, made sure that I met with Treasury to extend the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, made sure that we look at longer term funding with Treasury, online, not travel to London with all the cost and all the time. So, you know, there's things that I do, you may not see. And it may be the reasons that I've give you that I'm not at that meeting. But I will, I take on board and I will try and do my best to attend. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor King, please. Put you over the monitoring officer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I can read directly from the rules. So a personal explanation may only relate to some material part of an earlier speech by the member which may appear to have been misunderstood in the present debate. So it's really around a misunderstanding, it's not a reply to a question.
Thanks. councillor King, please.
Can you, thank you, Mr Mayor, can you hear me councillor Pallister? All right, you've got, the first one's more of a comment about seven point one. It's really positive that we're looking at an in-house provision to reduce the high cost placements on the budget. And I'm looking forward to seeing that going forward. Obviously, we, you probably remember when we did have an in-house provision in Grangestown and Lakes Estate. And I'm hoping that a lot of lessons have been learnt since we moved away from our own in-house provision because they weren't suitable for young people. The other one is about eight point one and the business engagement. We had a conversation a while ago outside Corporate Parenting Board. About 10 years ago, we had the enterprise team, which was European funded. And when we lost the funding for that, myself and a couple of others set up Redcar and Cleveland Business Network, which was revitalised Redcar and Cleveland. And we ran that successfully for about seven years to try and support SMEs and self-employed people within the borough. The only reason we closed it down was because of the ambassador programme, because we tended to be duplicating a lot of work. Now, there was a big relaunch of the ambassador programme about a year ago when funding came to an end. It appears to have gone nowhere, there's no mention of it. So I'd like an update, you might not have the answers today as to what is happening with the ambassador programme. And I think I mentioned it to you before, I still have all of the details of all the SMEs. We helped support people like Daisy Made Tea Rooms, the One Up One Down, by signposting them to the, to the team, offering them support from other small enterprises and self-employed people around insurance and everything. It was a really productive, low cost, well, it was run at no budget by volunteers. I'm not saying I could restart it up again on my own because it was time. But it would be interesting, Lyn, if we could please have a meeting maybe outside this room and share some thoughts? Or are you aware of anything that the council is now doing for networking opportunities for SMEs and the self-employed in the borough? Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Pallister, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, thanks for your question. Yeah, we're using a lot of the levelling up partnership funding, aren't we, for in-house provision? I wish we'd have been able to do this earlier, to be honest, councillor King. We know the issues we've got with children's residential care and having to move children outside the area, which is costly and it's, it's not good for the children and the families as well. So the more in-house provision we can provide, the better. And I think it's a real good use of, of the funding. Not always, not always do we say funding goes in the right place, but I think this funding is def, definitely has made a difference. Yeah, the ambassador programme, wasn't it? And unfortunately, you know, some things do get cut and that, that was one of the areas that got cut. But before it was cut, there was, there is a, at the, there was, at the, basically the business community that felt they got a lot from it, they have set their own network up, business community network up. So I'll get the officers to find out more information because you're right, it made a difference. But it's like, what do we keep, what, what don't we? This is how we go on for years, isn't it? Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Leroy, please.
Thank you very much. So just a couple of questions, one of them at eight point three, it talks about economic benefits and the 10,000 job creation. And therefore, asking why the jobless figure or the claimant figure remains static at 4%? So that discrepancy. There is a point that I want to ask about the impact on lowest decile communities, so your community in particular. So this inward investment's coming in, how's that having an effect on your community of Grangestown in particular? I'll draw an example, for example, the 250 million investment in an incinerator at Wilton 11, that's on your doorstep. What advantages did that bring to your community exactly? I would like updates on the Redcar Hotel, where that land seems to have been empty for a while. So understand what the exact timelines of those are, it's in your report. Are those soft timelines? Are we set on some construction? The Redcar Centre, a verbal update really on what's happening there with that site that we passed opposite Sports Direct. The local plan, in terms of sustainability going forward, will you be having conversations with Teeswide, so the other authorities as well, with regards to sustainability going forward, bearing in mind the mammoth figures and challenges that you've been given? Got them down? Yep. So the next one would be, can you please put consideration, considering we have to build 10,000 houses and the sustainability issues that we have, Gisborne, I would include Skelton, certainly Mask, certainly Saltburn, the infrastructure problems that we have and sustainability issues, please give consideration to two new villages of 5,000 and their location with a preemptive plan, pre-local plan, so that we can direct developers in the hiatus where to go? The next bit is the deplorable state of the existing housing stock. I had the pleasure of being part of a documentary, it did include your own ward, councillor Pallister. I was very shocked, to be honest, some of the housing conditions in your ward. So just want to understand how we're going to tackle this going forward with the local plan, which seems to focus on four and five bedroom at the moment, executive houses, rather than those who really need better housing. And then finally, a question with regards to the pull-through of private projects at Teesworks. Now, in comparison to Wilton, Wilton has three projects, private projects, pulled through per year, where Teesworks has had one in three years. So I just wanted to understand why the discrepancy on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. councillor Pallister, please.
Right, let's, where do I start? So I'll probably start with one of the easier ones. So the hotel, so the lease has currently been finalised and we've done the site remediation. And so the work's complete. So we're really just waiting for them to, to move on site and develop the hotel. There doesn't seem no reason why they're not going to do that. That was one of the easier ones. Wilton 11, I can remember bringing a, a motion to full council on this, but it wasn't about the environmental impacts. I think we've, we've taken more notice about climate change now. This was about jobs not going to local people. So it was where, the motion was where possible, local jobs for local people. So the, the issue that was raised with me on Wilton 11, but since then, you know, it's, it's that balance, isn't it? Because if you went outside and spoke to the lads and lasses that are working on Wilton's site, they would be quite disappointed if we didn't back some of these developments. So what we need to do, as with the electric arc, we need to make sure that we put the right conditions in place, that the environmental agency make sure that they do their work in terms of making these developments. Because we need, you've mentioned, you know, why have we still got high unemployment? Well, we maybe need to do more on the skills, which I mentioned at the beginning. We need to be more on the ball in terms of planning and getting, make sure that they've got the skills in our community to get the jobs. Because, you know, we, we have never had this opportunity. So, you know, I, I hope in the next few years that we're going to see them job figures coming down because we really need to make sure that local people get the local jobs. Right, where am I? Redcar Centre. Which, which part of Redcar? M&amp;S, oh, right, yeah. Yeah, well, M&amp;S, obviously you'll know that we've had to, we've had to put, we are doing work behind the scenes, but we didn't envisage some of the issues with the party wall and the, the structure of the building. So we have had to, you know, stop work on that, but there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. Hopefully in January, be able to get back on site. Right, it's, it's, you know, she's a really good help, this girl. Yeah, so the local plans, are we having conversations with the Tees Valley? Yeah, so the local plans, are we having conversations with the TE- over TEES Valley? Um, I, I would think, I would, I would think I'm not going to start talking and writing the local plan, but I, I would think we do that if there's developments that cross borders. We would need to be discussing with, with, um, with our um councils in probably the nearest one, isn't it, is Mi- is Middlesbrough? So, you know, I think that happens, but I'm sure that, that would happen when, um, when there's any impact covers both areas. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, do you know, I'm really sorry that I'm having to stop and start. Um, so the, the, yeah, the inf- in terms of infrastructure, I, I, again, I mentioned it, I think it was, it was councillor Pugh that was, was talking about, um, you know, the number of house, houses we need to build. Of course, we haven't, we, we haven't got the right infrastructure with building houses without enough shops and, um, uh, GP surgeries. You know, we, the roads are congested. So, you know, I really hope this government will take the infrastructure issue seriously because you cannot build all these houses um with, without it. So, yeah, I'm behind you with that one. Yeah, you, you, yeah. So, the, the hous- mo- most of the housing stock in Grangestown is, we have very, very few homeowners, to be fair. Most of it is um social housing, so it's mainly beyond housing. There's some 13 and there's some accent. Um, so, you know, if they are poor quality, it's around maintenance of their houses, to be fair. And, you know, it's probably one of my uh main issues in terms of um ward concerns that I get is housing. There's, there's no two ways about that. Obviously fly tipping and things like that. But damp, I'm constantly um on to. In fact, at one point, they didn't have a dedicated officer, but they have now. Got a dedicated officer dealing with damp issues. I know that's not in Grangestown, but I, I take on board and I appreciate what you're saying about poor quality housing. And, you know, we do see that sometimes in the private sector with some poor private landlords. And, and, um, you know, we try and deal with that through our own housing, housing department. But, um, yeah, it, it is an issue and, and in this day and age, we shouldn't be, particularly social housing providers as well, shouldn't be having their tenants living in poor quality housing. Yeah, the, the last question, I'm going to have to get back to you because I don't, I don't quite understand that question. But if you write to me, I'll get a raw detail on the answer. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Thanks for that. councillor L, please.
Um, councillor Pallister, it's a question about the new National Planning uh Policy Framework. Um, do you think it will better support healthy living for our residents?
Councillor Pallister, please.
So, again, I've only quickly went through the NPPF, but um I am pleased to, to report that what it does say is we can refuse fast food outlets if what we're, within walking distance of schools. And if we feel that it will have a, there's evidence that these outlets will have a, an impact on local health. So, you know, the good news is yes. I think what we, we also, and again, I've mentioned that on the terms of the quality of housing. So the more we can do to make them energy efficient, the more we keep people warm and the bills are less. So that improves health as well. And then the other area is making sure there's enough space for walking and cycling as well. So it looks promising and, yeah, we are saying that we, we can refuse fast food takeaways.
Thank you. councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, councillor Pallister, thank you for your report. I've got three areas to touch upon. Uh, firstly, the uh local plan. I think we're all aware of the uh labourist uh engagement that it takes to produce a local plan. We should have enough experience under our belt to be able to expedite uh the delivery of it without taking all of the time indicated. In the interim, what we need to do, if we are not already doing, is to clarify the brownfield sites that are available for development. Now, historically, brownfield sites have not attracted a great deal of interest from developers because it has not been uh seen to be entirely remunerative for their investment. We need to be identifying clearly where we can see development, the potential on the brownfield sites, and incorporating that as a banker in our forward uh local plan. So I would ask that that be done. We can also consult with all local ward members, asking where do members see the potential for exploiting existing land? That is local knowledge. It may very well be that there is some prejudice in that. But I do think that consultation should be started as a matter of priority so we can garner local knowledge to see where the potential is. Therefore, we're ahead of the game when we start to sit down collectively to wonder what on earth we're going to be putting on paper. It should already be there. So I ask that that be done as a matter of priority. We, we've talked about capital allocation and we are grateful in Saltburn, if I can be parochial for a moment, uh, that funding has been made available uh through TEES Valley Combined Authority funding. However, up to half of the capital allocated has been either sequestered for other developments elsewhere in the borough, has uh been spent on work that should have been undertaken as part of maintenance programmes in the last four years. And because of the day, delay in implementing any of these, no matter what the provenance, uh, the cost of delivery has just rocketed. Now, we have to get more efficient in our programming. We have to be more professional in our delivery. We need to have standards that we can assess too. And we need to have uh officers who are going to be in touch with developments and not finding out retrospectively where something may have or has in fact gone wrong. We in Saltburn are experiencing uh considerable delays in even agreeing what our wishlist is. The 2017 list has hardly been delivered. Two of them are actually going to be delivered, and we're very grateful for the support, by TEES Valley Combined Authority itself. Because we are spent up on the money that we've been allocated. So I ask you to attend our next ward meeting, which is going to be early in the new year if you can, and you would be welcome to come to that. So that we can look to see what funding we can glean from uh TEES Valley Combined Authority, which seems to be a reasonable uh source of, of, of support. And look at a particular detail. So thank you, if you can, for coming and supporting on that. And my third point briefly is about conservation. We continue to add conservation areas to our list. Uh, the work done by the conservation officer and other officers in preparing these is admirable. However, the compliance with them is not admirable. Although we are going to receive a, a replacement, it would appear in the new year, we did get agreement and we understood that all members of the planning department had enforcing powers, but they are not exercising them. Why not? So we have a vacuum where one member of staff is not returning to work. We're waiting to employ a replacement. When in fact, we already know that that one member of staff was totally inadequate in terms of servicing, monitoring and assisting in the delivery of the compliance of conservation areas that we keep adding too. So I would ask that you go back to the department, ask for a really formal, objective assessment of what establishment is required. And do not take no for an answer when we're told that we cannot afford it.
Thank you. Councillor Pallister, please.
Right, do you want to start with something here? Chair, is there any reading? Yeah, thanks. Yeah, um, right. So the local plan, I need to clarify brownfield sites and do that really as soon as possible, identify them. So I've already asked officers at least two, three months ago to start that work. So I will be asking again. Um, as far as I know, they have started some of that work. So, but I'll, I'll push again just to, to double check. Consult with ward members to explore in their own words, yeah. I mean, you know, the local plan, you know you've been involved in it before, has to have involvement from everyone, local mem- elected members, community, businesses. You know, we, we wouldn't be able to do, do that without that. So, yeah, I mean, the sooner, if, if, what I will do is task officers to talk to all local members now, before the local plan actually starts. So capital, TEES behalf of the capital investment was being used as part of maintenance. Cost of delivery rocketed to be more efficient with delivery. I think I mentioned as well, it's, you know, the cost of inflation, cost of materials. You know, it's staffing, everything, everything has gone up, hasn't it? So acquisitions. So sometimes, you know, I mean, we've got, we've got some really, really, I mean, last year I didn't know the officers as well. I've worked with them a lot longer now and we've got some absolutely amazing officers in the Growth and Enterprise Directorate who give a hundred, hundred percent um to the jobs they do. And sometimes, you know, sometimes we don't always get it right. You know, the, the Bakehouse Square was, was an example. We've put that learning in place. Um, but sometimes it is out of their control. And the other thing as well, I'm told, is we've, we've lost a lot of tier-two contract, large contractors, which has then caused there isn't as much competition to pick from. So there, there are reasons. But again, I take on board, sometimes I see some of the costs and I think, oh my God, you know, why does this cost this much? But, you know, then I'm informed, yes, it does. And, you know, we've done due diligence on each part of that contract. Um. Will I do a site visit? Of course I will. I think I had that last year from councillor King, didn't I, about coming out and doing visits? Um, but yeah, of course I'll come to any area. The con- conservation areas, yeah, we, we, we are going to be doing a lot more plans as well. And, and, and I have raised this concern about, you know, we, it's, it's right to have them because it supports the um regulatory committee and, and, and it, and it is there to, to improve, you know, like our, what we've got beautiful towns and villages. But, um, there can be issues in terms of the enforcement of it. And, you know, we've, we've not had the planning enforcement officer for, for quite some time. We are getting um a replacement and hopefully he'll come back. But, um, yeah, I can, I can only say that, you know, I'll ask officers to do the best to make sure that, you know, the quality does stand up to what it should be in the cam. Is there any more? No, that's it. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Final speaker, councillor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. May I rest it down? Because I'll be quite away from this if I have to stand up. Are you comfortable, as they? Uh, just like you say, thank you for your support for the Eston residents in the great area of TS6 for your ongoing work on all some of the stuff that you've been dealing with. Uh, with the levelling up has been quite challenging in some respects. Um, it's, my question for you is just, out of your report, you've missed the, the active travel off. Um, and I think if I'm, I'm aware that, is that no longer going ahead? And if so, I'm, I'm led to believe that this money could be diverted somewhere else, potentially the pool. Um, as councillors, we voted last year to borrow eight million pounds towards the learner pool, which, you know, I'm all for. However, people's views might have been changed at this 4.7 million not being there. So I suppose, and if you want to bring councillor Massey in to give me a better understanding, I'd be more than happy to do so. It's just if we're diverting this money, and I know the councillors in a financial situation where if we're borrowing eight million, we don't need to borrow as much now. But because of the level of interest that you're to care on that, potentially, if we diverted that 4.7 million towards the precincts, because the precinct's only going to get um half complete now because of the, the spend that we're doing elsewhere. And have we factored in the fact of we're going to have to put that money in at a later date for the Eston precincts? Where if instead of sending that money to the pool, we can now send it to the precinct? So the com- the precinct can be fully complete with the inflation? Personally, I'd rather have the active, active travel done for the kids of TS6 to be able to get to school over and on for, without getting the shoes muddy and be able to ride the bikes, et cetera. But. S- sorry? Yeah, of course.
Councillor Pallister.
So, so, yeah, so we, 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 I mean, we all attend only the Eston regeneration group meetings. So at the last one, from memory, it was agreed that Louise would take a revised PAR project assessment to the government and say, could we, because what was agreed was, we would look at two options, you're right, 4.7 million going into the pool or 3.1 million going into the pool, sorry, 3.2, and 1.7 going into, I haven't got them figures right, have I? 4.7 going into the pool and 1.7, no, 3 million going into the pool and 1.7 million staying within active travel. And we would look at the Flats Lane area connecting to Gisborough. That's, that was what was, the majority agreed, that Lu would take back to government. Nothing has been brought to cabinet or agreed, but I take your point in, we, you know, I mean, I've mentioned its acquisitions, 3.7 million up to now, we've had to pay out or will be paying out to 18 properties. And just for information, 17 have pretty much agreed. One, we just have the tenant to, to agree their compensation as well. So that's moving. Put the, the Eston precincts at last moving. Still costs a lot of money, which is why we haven't got as much, have we? To, to develop out more than it looks like between five and seven units. Phase two will come after. I understand what you're saying. I, I can't make a, a decision on whether we borrow more money or, or where, where we go with that 4.7 million. It's a discussion to, to be had to councillor Taylor. But that was what happened at the last one. It was an agreement, we would probably keep some active travel in and we would use 3 million for the pool. Now, I take your point, you're now talking about, can we divert it to Eston precinct? And I, I do think that's a, a conversation outside of the, the chamber, to be fair.
Thank you. And thanks for your part, councillor Pallister. You can have a rest now. Right, move on to motions. Uh, motion one, move by councillor Taylor, please.
Uh, move. Sorry. Thank you, Mr Mayor. So today I'm delivering this motion as part of the Armed Forces Champion for Redcar in Cleveland. Um, I've held this post since June 2023. Uh, so I'd like to say thank you, even though he's not here, Bill Clark, who was the previous Armed Forces Champion, for his support he gave to veterans and the family of Redcar in Cleveland. I'm a veteran myself and I did conduct free op-
I'm a veteran myself and I did conduct free operational tours of duty. So I'm a firm, I have great understanding of the role itself and of the Armed Forces family. So, and also the wider resonance of Redcarlton, Cleveland have also demonstrated their deep respect and gratitude for the Armed Forces community. This is evident in their strong respect for remembrance events and Armed Forces Day. Nationally, one in 25 people are a veteran throughout the UK. This statistic is even higher here in Redcarlton, Cleveland. In 1963, the final national service constructs were discharged according to the 21th census. That gives 31% of veterans and that were over the age of 80 years old. 140,000 personnel seeing active duties over in Afghanistan with 53,000 seeing themselves over in Iraq with myself being one of them. These forces are now transitioned into civilian life or if not already, maybe doing so over the next five to 10 years. You can see by the figures below of the conflicts that the British forces have endured since World War Two. And if you look through that to present, you will see that there's just one year that British forces haven't been on active duty. And the one that we're missing out at the bottom is currently over in Mali as a peacekeeping role. So you can see the level of veterans and current personnel that are serving. The Armed Forces Covenant is a national promise to ensure fairness and respect to those who have served, veterans and their families. It's a core principle that no one should be disadvantaged due to their service. The veterans face a unique challenge, including housing and homelessness issues, mental and physical health concerns, social isolation and financial difficulties. National statistics emphasise the need for action. Two, two thirds of veterans experience mental health challenges, nearly half of them PTSD, anxiety or depression. Veterans under 25 are four times more than likely to take their own lives in comparison to civilian peers. In 202021, the council reaffirmed its commitment to the Armed Forces Covenant achieving silver standard. However, during a recent audit, we identified areas for improvement and some of these practices have lapsed within the council. Some of the best practices that I've found outside of the council are somewhere like Cheshire, where they are offering five, 12 days of annual leave for reservists undertaking training. They're actively promoting the Armed Forces Covenant to thousands of businesses, providing weekly drop-in sessions for veterans and their families, including gym memberships and swimming sessions, operating a guaranteed interview scheme for ex-forces personnel, offers guidance on housing homelessness and prevention. And then on top of that, the Welsh Government are supporting free swimming for veterans throughout Wales. Other councils have also secured funding for shoe starts. This services Armed Forces families, enabled children zero to four to attend nursery, freeing up parents from their working duties or struggling families. So the proposal is building our existing commitment. This council resolves to enhance the support of Armed Forces personnel, veterans and their family by raising awareness. How will we do that? Promoting the Armed Forces Covenant across the council departments. This could be as simple as adopting stickers to the walls in each council building, private sector businesses and community organisations through posters, social media and websites, making it more user friendly. Strengthening our leadership, reconfiguring to a point of full-time Armed Forces lead, unlocking potential grant funding opportunities. This is, and I know we're in a financial situation, but many councils across the UK have adopted this and it unlocks potential money from Armed Forces covenants and a lot of other places, such as 72,000 pounds to one local authority to help with shoe starts for zero to four year olds and gym memberships. Delivering clear job descriptions for Armed Forces champions in both councillor and officer roles, promoting existing services, running high-profile campaigns to raise awareness for veterans, including health service, social prescribing, sports and facility discounts. So within the health service, asking doctors' practices to make them more user-friendly, dental services to make them more user-friendly. And in one council in the UK, they have got currently student dental nurses working on veterans on their teeth, Mr Mayor. So these people, as they said, they need somewhere to practise, they need a live mouth. And if you are on the reserve list and you've got some dental problems, you cannot go on active duty should you be called to. Enhancing financial support, providing signposted, comprehensive guidance and housing options, homelessness prevention and support of military charities, offering detailed advice and benefits, debt management for veterans and their families. Support employment, gathering guaranteed interview scheme for forces leavers, veterans meeting essential criteria, ensuring these are included in job applications. And for those who don't know, when you're leaving the force, and the, when you're leaving the forces, you can get additional support from the army to go and work towards that role. So for example, if you don't have your HGV and you're applying for a HGV role, you can then go through and do your HGV that is funded by the forces as a resettlement programme over a 10-year period from leaving the forces. Recognising reservists, increasing awareness across departments, ensuring reservists are supported and effectively signposted throughout the Armed Forces lead and update on websites. As a reservist, you've got the TA, but you've also got people who are leaving the forces now, they will be actively, be called upon within the next five years, should there be a need to. These people have to look after themselves physically and mentally and we could give them greater support by doing so. So in conclusion, council pledges reaffirm the strength of its committee to our Armed Forces Covenant aspiring the goal for the gold standard status by adopting these principles. And we assure the veterans and service person and their families receive the support, respect they deserve. It will also free up what this council adopts, especially when we look at adult social care, for example. Councillor Earl, in her previous report, picked up on something and it was called prehabilitation. This was someone before they go for a knee operation, might get a gym membership for three months or get physio to help them recuperate better. So the cost difference on prehabilitation to rehabilitation afterwards was significantly reduced. So when you're dealing with someone who's dealing with mental health, suicide, and you give them a gym membership or a veteran swimming session for an hour on a Friday evening and they're with their fellow veterans, this is the massive prevention that can help. Forty pound a month or, you know, the worst case scenario. So the motion is councils reserves to adopt the action this proposes outlined above, announcing support for the families and communities and progressing towards silver implementation of the Armed Forces Covenant. I do have to stress that, you know, as part of this proposal, it is someone to take on a new role as an Armed Forces lead. Now, that Armed Forces lead could be on a part-time basis, shared up with another council or it could be on a fully full-time role to work along, alongside the Armed Forces Champion. Thank you. And I'll look for a second please and then any questions.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Do we have a second please? Thank you. Motion for debate, councillor King, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you for bringing this motion, which I will be supporting. Quite by chance this week, I spoke to a veteran of between 35 and 40 years who gave me some statistics, which sadly I don't have with me, which explained that the suicide rate amongst veterans in Redcarlton, Cleveland is one of the highest in the whole of the UK. So it's definitely something that needs challenging. And also in my day job, I often see the impact of meeting families who have had struggles with mental health from people returning from conflict. So I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hart, please.
Thank you, Chair. And I will also be supporting this motion. I know Dave's been working on this motion a long time and it's with great sadness that the whole of Gisborough is in mourning at the moment over a young man called Sam Morgan. Sam was a brilliant young man, served his country well and did three terms in Afghanistan. Him and his family have begged for help with his PTSD and to no avail. He's left a wife, a mum and dad, brothers and three little ones. And we should be doing more for our arms, whether they're serving or they're veterans. So I will be following this motion and supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Care, please.
Thank you, Chair. David mentioned that we have signed up to the government some years ago, I understand. Currently, it doesn't even appear on our website and there is actually no information that I've been able to find on our website that would assist our armed forces. I'm sure we can all absolutely agree that this is not something that we should pay lip service to. The motion sets out in a very clear and unambiguous way how we can improve what we do for our armed forces, for those transitioning to civilian life and for our veterans. It's a means for the whole council and for other organisations to get behind our Armed Forces Champion. So in support of councillor Taylor, I would hope that the whole council would have no hesitation in supporting our motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Salvon, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. As an ex-services member myself in the Royal Air Force, I was one of the lucky ones because I didn't get sent away to war. I did my four years' service and basically was in the UK for those four years. And I just can't imagine those people that have served in Afghanistan and Iraq, what they sometimes have to deal with and go through. Now, I'll, I'll bring to the chamber a story from September. I was in the Neptune in the sauna and this guy walked in and straight away he looked, he looked not in the best way, was shaking. And I saw some tattoos on his, on his arm. It made me realise he's a, he's a veteran. So I started talking to him and what he told me was that he'd been trying to get help from Middlesbrough Council for over a year. Now, he'd finally got housed and was settling down. But in that year, he said he had some horrendous thoughts because he didn't feel like he was worthy on this, on this planet anymore. And I just think that we need to do more in the Tees Valley as a whole for veterans. And I just hope that Dave, councillor Taylor can continue his good work and I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Hanaway, please.
If any knowledge or wisdom to add to what's already been said, but I just wanted to thank councillor Taylor, councillor Thompson for bringing the motion and to say that the independent group fully supports it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Earl, please.
Yeah, I fully support the motion as well, particularly about advice for armed service personnel and people that have left the armed services. Because until recently, I didn't know that children of people serving in the armed forces or in some cases, children where a parent has died in, on active service are entitled to a pupil premium grant that can be paid to the school that they're actually studying at. I, I think this is very important, this sort of information, it's sort of tucked away. People may not know this, this service pupil premium.
Thank you. Councillor Hunt, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wasn't going to speak, but to be quite truthful, it's, it's quite emotional, isn't it? Because thank you very much for bringing this motion. And one of the main things is the mental health side. You know, it doesn't just lead to suicide, but the damage it does over the years, the lasting of that forever. And I, I just think it's a very important thing that we support and teach the youth, the children of, of what these people have done for us and are doing. It's very important. These people are fighting to save us, to keep us safe. And the veterans are diminishing as, as they are getting older, dying off, there's not many, for what they've given, I think it's very little to ask, to support and do everything we can to keep these people safe, housed, medically right, you know? And as I said, I've, I've slept out a few times over the years to try and raise a little bit of money for Saffir and that and what I've seen and of the veterans. I, I get very emotional about it and I just thank you again. And I hope that we all feel that way and support this. So, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor, sum up, please.
Go on for the support. Yeah, councillor, just one of the statistics you said about the, the suicide rate at the, in the area, is someone brought to my attention and they said that the suicide rates from conflict since the Falklands is higher than we actually lost in the conflict altogether. So there's an absolutely drastic need for here locally and also whichever government is in power at any one time to make sure that the forces, families, veterans and current service personnel are looked after. Yeah, I just thank you all and look, the motion gets passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Follows in favour of the motion? Are you sure? Yeah. That's carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Right, just to move on to number 11, appoint members. These have already been circulated. So it's councillor Hargreaves to replace councillor Salvon on corporate resources and councillor Crane to replace councillor Thompson on regulatory committee. Everyone okay with that? Yeah? Thank you very much. Move on. That gets better. Right, move on to questions. Question one, councillor Care to councillor Brown, but I think councillor Richardson is going to take that question, councillor Care. Thank you.
The recent edition of the council magazine, This is Redcarlton, Cleveland, includes data alterations to household waste and recycling collections over the Christmas period. Such alterations only affect households who normally put out their bins on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Don't get me wrong, the crews deserve their Christmas holidays, but it's a disastrous mistake for you to impose revised collection days as much as six, seven and eight days in advance of normal collection dates. Surely the revised collection dates should not be long before, but instead shortly after the normal collection dates. Then if people mistakenly put out their bins on the normal day of collection, they can simply be left in situ for a short time until emptying. No matter how much publicity you have put out about earlier than normal collections, hundreds of householders will understandably fail to conform. After all, remembering refused collection dates is hardly at the top of their Christmas list. Inevitably, unemptied, crammed, Yuletide, Yuletide bins will overflow onto our streets. Do you intend leaving these unemptied bins overflowing with Christmas waste and recyclables in situ until in the second week of January, the normal cycle kicks back in? If so, there will be massive public protest with this council being well and truly rubbish. Or will you deplete our crews and limited resources with a wide-ranging, unplanned, unbudgeted catch-up? Either way, Labour is failing this council and its people. Why should they pay through the nose for unrealistic planning and trash?
Thank you. Councillor Richardson, please.
Okay, so I, I'll read the answer and then add my own comments at the end. The way Christmas and New Year has fallen this year is causing operational issues which has led to a change in the usual waste collection days. We tried to reduce the impact on residents as much as possible, however, this has proved difficult due to losing two collection days week commences in the 23rd and one day week commences in the 30th. It's not possible to slip all the collection days to a larger, a later date and catch up with the resources that we... It's not possible to slip all the collection days to a larger, a later date and catch up with the resources that we have. Collections forward to ensure residents in the areas affected still receive a collection and can dispose of some of their waste prior to the Christmas period. The crews will be making revised collections we commence in the 16th of December and will work with residents to ensure all presented bins will be collected and emptied ready for the Christmas period. Alongside this, the communications team have issued social media posts, placed articles in resident newsletters and placed articles to make sure residents are aware of the changes to the collections. Feedback from the crew so far has indicated that a large number of residents did present their bins for collection. Arrangements have also been put in place to make sure we remove any excess Christmas waste for residents on their next scheduled collection after Christmas. Residents can also dispose of waste at the tip at Dunstale. We'd like to thank all residents for their patience and reassure them that the teams are working hard to collect their waste over the Christmas and New Year period. So, as it says in there, they always take the extra rubbish after Christmas. And I'm one of the residents affected who've had my bin emptied a week early. So I will bag up any extra rubbish, put it next to the recycling bin and it will get taken away in the after-Christmas cycle. But I do understand that the template of the changes was not well understood. And as I went into Aston on Tuesday, I was accosted by confused residents who didn't know which bin to put out, when or where to put it. So I do appreciate that whilst communication went out, it wasn't wide enough and it wasn't clear enough, even for my next-door neighbours who were texting me to say, put your bin out, but it wasn't today. Hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. Do you have another question supplementary?
Question please. Yeah, when I came into the chamber, five to two, I was literally mobbed by other councillors who agreed with me that this is a big mistake. And no wonder, because even on Christmas Day, we as councillors will have our phones ringing by people who haven't got their bins emptied. I advise you, if you've got an old-fashioned phone, to unplug it or to switch your mobile off. But, you know, this is going to cause catastrophe. Basically, I know what's happened. I've had a sort of formal answer, which was actually on the internet, probably yesterday or the day before. Basically, you've lost control of your offices. The officers have done this, in my opinion, without any political say-so, without it being considered properly at the political level. So all I can do is say, get down on my knees and say, after the fiasco you're going to have over the next month, just think about changing this. Will you undertake to...
Hold on, two seconds. What's the point of order? Right.
Right, can I just...
It's not, two seconds, two seconds. That wasn't the point.
I only need two seconds.
Let me get to answering first. I'll come back, yeah? That wasn't the point of order, councillor Cheney. Councillor Care, can you quickly, because you ran out of time already, give me a little bit more time. Can you do your supplementary question, please?
Will you undertake to review this ill-thought-out rubbish policy for future years?
Thank you. councillor Richardson.
We will look to have better understood messages going out to residents. We won't make the bin-wen work Christmas Day. So whilst we'll reschedule as best we can and Adam's team need to look into that and perhaps it wasn't satisfactory, I refute the claim we've lost control of the council and no, we won't make people work over the Christmas holidays during bank holidays.
Thank you. Question two, councillor Grogan to councillor Earl, please. Councillor Grogan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. With the removal of the winter fuel allowance, around about 10 million pensioners will lose this payment. This is based on information from the House of Commons library, from which potential 4,000 pensioners in this country might die. A statistic that Labour actually came up with in 2017 in a desperate choice of heating or eating. Members in this chamber will blame the Conservatives for their black hole rightly or wrongly, but it was this current Labour government that has removed the winter fuel allowance. This council has rightly released press and media coverage and its members in this chamber have spread the word about pension credit. We've also told our elderly and their families and friends and there's been an increase of claiming of 145% of the credit. This is from the DWP and in the last eight weeks. Great, we think, but only 70% of those were eligible for support, again from the DWP. In England, many local authorities, one in five based on the Radio 4 Moneybox programme, have stepped in. The LGA doesn't have any specifics and doesn't know which councils are offering this, but around 50 of them are. And here in the North East, North Tyneside Council are using their own hardship funds as well as the government's own Household Support Fund to offer direct repayments. The Household Support Fund has qualifying criteria like receiving housing benefit or council tax reduction. This is also sourced from the North Tyneside Council. Do you and this councillor, councillor Earl, look at accessing the government's housing support funds for those pensioners that are just missing out?
Thank you. councillor Earl please.
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. So, yes, we met to discuss this mid-September. The team had already actually got to work with their pension credit campaign. But I'll actually just read out some more information. So all pensioners on council tax support, all housing benefit, regardless of whether they get pension credit, are entitled to a housing support fund assistance payment from us. We already have most of their details and pay them automatically. But for anyone who needs to claim, they can do this via our Household Support Fund webpage or if needed, visit one of our libraries where they'll be given assistance in claiming. We've also allocated £120,000 of the Household Support Fund for residents that are not on benefits but are still low income and facing financial challenges. We have commissioned Citizens Advice to administer this fund, who as well as processing payments of £120 per household for successful claims, will also offer debt and expenditure advice as appropriate. Claims for these discretionary payments can again be made online on the same webpage or with assistance in one of our libraries. In the recent edition of our council magazine, we included an article that informed residents how to check if they are entitled to pension credit, how to apply to the Household Support Fund, as well as advertising warm spaces and the fire brigade's Stay Safe and Warm scheme. And we also applied for and received funding from the Northern Gas Networks to provide warm homes, healthy people.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question?
Councillor Earl, for the answer. We've got 31,755 pensioners that were within the borough. That was in September when I got them figures. And unfortunately, in my ward, we don't have a library for anyone to go and visit, unfortunately. I know we've got the Redcar library, but some of the elderly don't want to go into Redcar. So, was it £120,000 worth of access? £120,000 worth of funds that have been accessed then?
£120,000 of the Household Support Fund for residents who are not on benefits but facing challenges.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just think with it being such a hot potato, especially for the current government, that we should be giving our residents a little bit more opportunity to access this fund from the government as it ends in March 25 and has been extended from October to March. So I would hope that, like yourself, with being the portfolio holder, and this council would try and tell people more about this potential. It might be only £70, it might be £120, because they're the two figures that are banded on the website. It's not very well known about, it's not very well publicised. I only noticed it by chance. So I would like, if possible, if we could promote that as well, if something that you can do.
Thank you. councillor Earl please.
Yeah, thank you for that. I do have to say, with the discretionary payments, there is a sort of a structure by which those can be made. So we have to sit within that structure when we make the discretionary payments. But I take your point, actually. And also I take your point about not everybody has access to the internet. Libraries are extremely important for many people, particularly older people, actually, and spreading that message. As I said, we've tried to put information into the magazine, for example, that people may read there. But sometimes it is a problem getting that message out.
Thank you. Question three, councillor Pew, is that still on to councillor Brook? Because councillor Brook's not here.
I think councillor Richardson.
Councillor Richardson is going to do that one as well, right. Sorry, councillor Pew, please.
Oh yeah. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much, councillor Richardson. I appreciate it's not particularly easy, the job you've got to do. The area around Spencer Beck Shops continues to be a hotspot for antisocial behaviour, illegal off-road bikes and other crime, including drug dealing. I'll just clarify, by Spencer Beck Shops, I mean the shops just off Allendale Road on the border between Spencer Beck and Overfields. I've raised this in full council before because, I mean, the story of our street wardens going there and getting attacked by people on off-road bikes has stuck with me. You know, and I've never really seen any publicity or anything on it. I just think it's absolutely outrageous. Our wardens were attacked and there's no sort of CCTV or anything, you know, there's no evidence. And as far as I'm aware, the people who attacked them have never been prosecuted or anything like that. Recently, after, of course, incident in Kirkleefen Ward, it was announced that a CCTV system is to be installed at Greengate Play Park, which is fantastic. That's really good. It's disgraceful to see that park attacked time and again. The only reason I reference that is my understanding previously was that the money we had through one of the levelling up funds for new CCTV wasn't actually being invested in new CCTV systems. It was being invested in renewing the CCTV systems we had. So if there is new CCTV systems being installed around the borough, my question to councillor Brook was whether Spencer Beck Shops is a site being considered for such a system.
Thank you. councillor Richardson, please.
Through the levelling up partnership programme, our CCTV project was allocated funding to acquire new digital CCTV equipment and to refurbish the existing council CCTV control room infrastructure. The CCTV project has identified several locations across the borough where cameras are to be upgraded, replaced and new additional cameras added. This is where antisocial behaviour issues have been observed. I can confirm that Spencer Beck Shopping Precinct is one of the locations where a new CCTV camera is to be installed. There is already a suitable column in place and the project will be complete by March 2025.
Do you have a second question or supplementary?
Very much, councillor Richardson. That's Made My Christmas. Fantastic news. Thank you.
We always try and make people happy, don't we? Right, move on. Question four, councillor Pew again, while he's on a roll here. Councillor Richardson to answer, please.
Oh, councillor Richardson again, yeah. No, planning application for 234 new homes at the bottom of Skipper's Lane has been proposed. I appreciate, it's always sensitive discussing applications in the full council chamber. But yeah, there's a number of problems with the application. I'm more than happy to say I'll certainly be objecting to it, even though I'm sick of objecting to planning applications. But anyway, if the leader of the council, I just wish developers would come with a proper plan, if you know what I mean. But if the leader of the council is familiar with Skipper's Lane, I'm sure he'd agree that a road of that size is not fit to accommodate 500 additional cars. The reality is, though, despite the objections of local residents, I expect from fellow ward councillors representing Normanby, Teesville and Southbank, additional development at Normanby High Farm seems inevitable, particularly with the changes to the planning regulations, the fact it's a national developer, you can just see what's going to happen if our planning committee rejects it. And really, I don't want to cross any lines, so I won't go into that. But, you know, you can see it going to appeal and all sorts and it's grim, really. My question was, does the leader of the council agree in principle that new developments like this one should be tied to section 106 obligations to ensure that this authority is appropriately reimbursed to provide the infrastructure necessary to meet the demands of developments such as this one on local services? Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Richardson, please.
Application for the development you referenced, we received it on the 3rd of December and public consultation started on the 4th. The site is allocated as the housing site on the current local plan. The consultation on the planning application will likely finish mid-January and at this point, we will establish any issues arising as the general public and other professionals comment on proposals. For a development of this type, it is likely that the developer will need to consider matters such as parking provisions, highway capacity, ecology, school place provision, health and others. Depending on the outcome of the public consultation, it is likely that some of these issues may need to be resolved through section 106 legal agreements with the developer. So yes, I agree that if issues arise from the development, the developer should mitigate these issues and one route of securing these is through 106 legal agreement. And as the deputy leader, yes, I do think they should pay it. And as a resident who lives on a 10-year unadopted estate, I feel your frustrations. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary?
I much appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that. Move on to question five. Are you taking this one as well? Yeah? Yeah, right. On a roll today, aren't you? Ending your money today. Question five from councillor Taylor to councillor Richardson, please.
Asking this question, given though it's not in my ward, it's actually in Normanby Ward, but there is a reason behind it. Just to give you an idea, that the parking that we're talking about in my question is two miles away from residence in Eston Undernab. This is one of the closest parks. In fact, we have no parks in Eston, or Bankfields for that matter. So when you put it into your satnav, it comes down as a 45-minute walk for an able-bodied person. So someone walking with three children would more than likely take a lot more time to get there. If you are to walk, you have to walk along a busy road, Bankfields Road and through Weston High Street. Or the alternative route is at the bottom of Eston Hills, which if anyone who's walked up there, especially in winter, it is really boggy and very hard to walk underfoot. So with the Woodland Centre at Flats Lane, it is a cherished community asset widely used by local families, skilled children, walkers, dog owners for recreation, mental wellbeing and leisure. The recent proposal to introduce parking charges cites raised significant concerns among TS6 residents as a whole. These charges will affect local families and the centre is primarily used for residents of TS6. The charges are likely to lead to increased illegal and dangerous parking on Flats Lane, nearby estates and NHS buildings, creating a serious safety risk. TS6 has fewer recreational spaces compared to other areas making the Woodland Centre an essential resort for local families. Will the cabinet member commit to visiting this site this week to witness the concerns firsthand in light of this agreed and to pause the process immediately to avoid unnecessarily expenditure on the traffic regulations orders and public consultation that I believe is set to go live in January? This will allow the council to reconsider its decision to stop charging for parking at the Woodland Centre that has never been a paid-for parking and also reduce the safety risks should these parking charges be made. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Richardson, please.
I can happily confirm that councillor Quatermain will meet with you and discuss any concerns that you have. I can't confirm that he'll pause anything because he's not here to ask, but there is a bit of information that the income generated is needed to support the delivery of the service across the borough. And we try to ensure these charges are appropriate to the location of the car park. This is why the charge proposed is only £1 for Flats Lane, which will allow people to park there all day. This is much lower than other car parks across the borough and shouldn't really deter people from using the country car. If there are specific concerns in relation to residents who may want to access this park for short periods of time, such as dog walkers, this can normally be accommodated in the operating hours of the charges. But he has put his heart into meeting and discussing, so we'll arrange a day. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary?
And obviously with the pound fee, it's considerably lower than other places that's proposed. If you work on the assumption that you're going to get roughly about 10 people parking and now we're up the Woodland Centre, which the Normanby councillors will probably say that that is probably not true. Even if we look at five cars per hour with a reduction in this, with the parking charges throughout, if them parking spaces were full over the course of the year, this would generate... were full over the course of the year, this would generate around about £30,000, £35,000 worth of income in year one. Now, when I look at a recent legal TVR for Eston, it costs £6,400 for yellow lines to be implemented on, well, one road through Eston. Doing some research, adding the electrical and the pair meters to this, it's anywhere between £10,000 and £20,000. The road has already been widened at the entrance, so I reckon that would have been the cost of around about £50,000. And then if we have to add yellow lines down throughout Flats Lane, that's probably going to be in the region of a £10,000. So by paying something now, it might not be the best down for this council at this moment in time. Are we looking at going to get revenue of £10,000, Mr Mayor? Or are we going to have to spend £100,000 to get that return? So that's why I want to meet up with the councillor Quatermain to put this forward and hopefully we can stop this.
Thank you. Councillor Richardson, please. Yeah.
Consider whether it's worth the investment.
Thank you. Question six, councillor Martin to councillor Richardson again, please.
Well, the lollipop person who went above and beyond to ensure the safety of the schoolchildren, even in a dangerous situation, her actions prevented potential harm to the students and I commend her on the decision. I also commend the court for delivering justice to the reckless driver involved. The incidents highlighted the vital role that lollipop crossings in keeping our children safe. With this in mind, I'd like to draw you to the attention of two dangerous crossings on Jubilee Road and Bankfields Road, which have been without a lollipop person now for god knows how many years. Given the importance of safety to our children, will you support us in reinstating these essential crossings? Your backing could make a significant difference to ensuring the safety of local families.
Councillor Richardson, please. Where's the bill? What's his councillor Quatermain?
Yeah, I know, but it's more under my portfolio, really, so. Okay, can I just say, assessments have taken place on both roads within the last six months and neither road meets the criteria for a school crossing patrol to be in place. And we consider the number of children, those unaccompanied, and the amount of traffic during the period before and after school. So safety of children's a top priority, of course, but school crossing patrols are non-statutory as well. So we're working within a tight budget and we're doing all we can to support school crossing patrols.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question?
Yeah, can you just clarify what times of days or what days of the week these assessments were made? And obviously if lollipop persons aren't mandatory, what are the odds of getting zebra crossings? So it is safer for children and parents across these dangerous roads.
Councillor Sovers.
To answer the details on that, I will have to give you a written response to that. You know, I don't know all the details about it. But it, you know, is a concern that we're, the budgets are so tight that all non-statutory expenditures coming under pressure. You know what the funding's like. I won't go into detail about it because time's going on, but I will get you a written report for those assessments. At the moment, any non-statutory spending, it's very difficult, given the budget. Yeah. Yeah, well, I'll get.
Right, thank you.
Get a detailed answer for it. Thanks very much.
All right, yeah, thanks. Right, moving on to question seven, councillor Thompson. Yeah, to councillor Richardson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Given the White Paper on Local Government Reform indicates that new unitary authorities must be the right size to achieve efficiencies, improve capacity and withstand financial shocks, and that for the most areas this will mean creating councils with a population of 500,000 or more, where does the future of Redcar and Cleveland Council lie?
Thank you. Councillor Richardson, please.
So the White Paper was published on Wednesday and is a lengthy document, over 100 pages long, so they haven't had time to consider and discuss the proposals in any detail. The White Paper states the government will facilitate a programme of local government reorganisation for two-tier areas and for those unitary councils where there is evidence of a failure or where the size or boundaries might be hindering their ability to deliver sustainable, high-quality services for their residents. It is not clear which authorities might fall into those categories, but the government says it will expect all two-tier areas and smaller or failing unitaries to develop proposals for reorganisation and that a letter will be sent to council leaders to formally invite proposals with information on the criteria for sustainable unitary structures and how and when to submit proposals and how the government intends to respond to proposals. Once we receive that letter, we'll be able to let members know in more detail and then we consider what action we need to take.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I have, and I appreciate councillor Brown is not here, but I'm sure the councillor will be able to reply to this specific question. Given the continuing lack of clarity and given that there is going to be some time in the future, a letter that we may receive during that period, there is bound, Mr Mayor, to be concern expressed in the community about the lack of clarity. So could we write formally to the minister expressing our concern about the ambiguity and request that the letter be sent as a matter of urgency so that we can receive clarity now instead of pondering this for perhaps an indeterminate period of time to come? So my question relates, can we respond positively to the indication and request a letter be sent to us specifically, giving a timescale?
Thank you. Councillor Richardson, please.
The paper was published on Wednesday and it's Christmas next week. We could give them a little bit of time to send the letter before demand that they comply with the timescales. So my answer would be enough now, but maybe later. I think we should give them a few weeks to offer clarity on the situation.
Thank you. Move on to question eight, councillor Joy to councillor Sovers, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Sovers, I imagine that most people in here would agree that the Duke of Edinburgh award scheme offers our young people an invaluable chance to learn leadership skills, promoting physical activity and encouraging volunteering and a real chance of extending life skills and ensuring that participants learn, contribute and develop personally. Gisborne Youth Club used to provide access to the Gold Award and recently the last cohort of participants received their Gold Awards at Buckingham Palace, hugely proud moment for all. Changes to the licensing of the scheme, though, mean that the youth centre cannot now offer the Gold Award to anyone from this borough. The only people able to access the Gold Award are those attending colleges who are participating in the scheme, though none of them currently offer this. Most of the Gold Award was delivered through an open centre based at Gisborne Youth Centre, where any student's apprenticeship, apprentices or young adults aged 16 to 25 could attend training and hundreds achieved their Gold Award. All the centre needs from the council is the licence fee of £1,600 per year. The expertise and equipment are already in place. Without this small amount, we are precluding our young people the chance to complete three awards and fulfil their potential at such a vital junction in their life. Would the cabinet lead please agree to sit down with the organiser and explore a last-minute rescue scenario, including finding a mere £1,600 a year for our adventurous and aspirational young people to carry on providing an open centre for the Duke of Edinburgh Gold Award Scheme?
Thank you. Councillor Sovers, please.
Yeah, I agree with you on a lot of that, Gemma. I'm happy to, and I do know about this and I've been approached about it and I thought it was a straightforward solution, but it's a bit more complicated, I'm afraid, than that. So the simple answer is yes, I'm happy to be part of a meeting and hopefully you'll join in as well with the organisers and council office and so on to see if we can find a solution. And I thought it may be that we get some local sponsor to sponsor it. As they say, it's only £1,600. But unfortunately, we have to, we need staff to oversee this programme, I believe, and we'd either have to recruit staff or commission someone. So that might involve a lot more extra costs as far as I'm aware, but we will sit down and discuss this, I'm sure. And so that could be a complication. In fact, in 2022, early Alps, before my time here, and is it before yours? I'm not sure. But yeah, it's yours as well, we were required to make, to find savings and members of the authority then agreed to end the council running of the Duke of Edinburgh Award and a number of staff were made redundant. So, you know, it has got some history, this. But yes, I mean, the main answer is yes, we need to sit down and discuss it because it's really important. And whether we need to get a local business sponsor, whether we can find a little bit, it's difficult, or whether we need to get Prior Post Club to support it, I don't know. But yes, we'll sit down and talk about it.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary? No. Councillor Anaway, councillor Anaway? Councillor Anaway, if you want to talk, can you go outside, please? Right, moving on to question eight, sorry, question nine. It's councillor Joy again to councillor Richardson, please.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. Councillor Richardson, given the ongoing concerns surrounding the environmental and health impacts of constructing a new incinerator in our borough to burn residual waste, can the cabinet member for the environment please outline what specific steps have been taken so far to investigate viable alternatives such as securing short-term contracts with existing facilities like Haverton Hill and Port Clarence to avoid committing to a costly and risky long-term financial project and help elected members arrive at an informed and rational decision?
Thank you. Councillor Richardson, please.
Once the evaluation process has been concluded in April or May of next year, a report will be presented to all the councils involved, which will include the business plan, detailed costing of the solution and comparisons to viable alternatives such as other waste-to-energy sites or contracts. The councils will then decide whether to appoint a preferred tenderer and go forward with a view to awarding the contract for financial close later in 2025 or whether not to progress and indeed choose one of those shorter contracts with a different provider. So hopefully.
Two seconds. Can we just, can you repeat the answer again? But if you want to, if you want to ask, we need to say a point of order and come through the mayor, yeah? Yeah, it's all right now.
Once the evaluation process has been concluded in April or May, a report will be presented to the councils, which will include a business plan detailing the costs of the solution compared with viable alternatives such as other waste-to-energy plants. The councils will then decide whether to appoint preferred tenderer with a view to awarding contracts later in 2025.
Thank you. Just before I move on, can we have a bit of voice? If people want to talk, can they go outside? Because people are talking and people can't hear the answers, so, you know what I mean, show some respect, yeah? Do you want a supplementary question, please?
That's okay. Thank you for that explanation. I think local residents are now starting to be really interested in what that process looks like. So on that, that's really good to know. With the new emissions trading scheme, so basically it's a, you know, it's a tax on fossil fuel emissions, can I ask whether any modelling has been done or will be done on what that would look like and will that be factored in so that we can be across all of the costs that will be incurred?
Thank you. Councillor Richardson, please.
Yeah, some modelling will be done, but there are really complicated models about, well, there's only the assumption about how much will be charged per tonne based on Europe. We don't know how much will be charged yet. Hopefully we'll have that detail. If we don't, we'll have to use an assumption. And then it's based on the fossil waste that you put into the incinerator, which is based on your levels of recycling or not. And then you, and then it's worked out from there. So I've seen various calculations and I couldn't tell you which one is right or wrong, but they vary by lots of millions of pounds. So it's certainly a concern, it's certainly been taken into consideration. And it's something we'll have to pay if we use an alternative provider as well because we don't have another viable solution at the moment.
Thank you. Question 10, councillor Leroy to councillor Richardson, yeah? Councillor Leroy, please.
Yep, thank you very much. So the Borough Council spends £3 million on councillors every three years. There are 59 councillors for only 137,000 residents. Tees Valley Combined Authority is formed of five Borough Councils, but it's not always clear who performs which task. I've got a long-running bush shot of Sargre for you all with. Now, the five boroughs of the Tees Valley area contain 100 wards with a total of 247 councillors for a combined population of 676,000. I fail to see why so many layers of government and councillors, especially when we throw in the five parish councils in this borough, are required. In 2014, along with councillor Kay, we were the two who voted against the Tees Valley Combined Authority's creation. It was clear it would become another layer of government with accountability issues and we were proven right. The abolition of the Cleveland County Council in 1995, a council that had served us well until that point, through a process unfortunately driven by power-hungry Fiftham searchers, Fiftham searchers over there, they should have abolished the district councils instead rather than the county council. Now, an irrational conglomerate of wards, Redcar and Cleveland has always had a problem in disparity and it's served little more than an organisation that has denied Middlesbrough its rightful status as a city by taking a chunk of Middlesbrough and throwing it in with abstract parts of North Yorkshire. I'd just say that Middlesbrough's other problem has been, of course, that it's got a Roman Catholic cathedral issue. Councillor Massey made me aware of this. It's clear that Redcar and Cleveland lumbers from one financial disaster to the next and it has been this way for a long period of time, since 2011, indeed, when I was first a councillor. It's always been too small to stand alone. It doesn't have the economy of scale to consistently attract talent, cook good deals and provide ultimately its population with the good service, the service they deserve. In six years, over two terms, a decade apart, I've never heard a resident say they identify with Redcar and Cleveland. There is clearly an identity issue. I could name thousands who would like to see it abolished. One of the Yorkshiremen who is inclined to think masked by the sea needs returning to North Yorkshire, it's likely time for the leader, or in this case, the deputy leader to take it in and thankful for taking this question, to write to the appropriate secretary of state to urge them to merge all Tees Valley local authority. It would increase scrutiny, democratise the local mayoral authority. Two characteristics it has chronically lacked since its inception. We have a duty to be humble in positions of power, not look at ourselves in terms of councillors and future allowances or power or whatever else. We must think about the future and what represents residents best. The current situation at Redcar and Cleveland is only serving a few financially untenable. As such, I'm requesting the leader introduce a full debate on the future of Redcar and Cleveland so we can fully and rationally debate the number of councillors, the future of this council. And as such, if we agree that engagement with the secretary of state on our terms, and this is key because I know part of the answer will be what happened after my question was submitted yesterday, but on our terms, I'll round off this. My fear is that this authority could be paired with Middlesbrough or Lo, and it's advantageous for us to be paired with Darlington because of its strategic position and Stockton because of its finances. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a bit of order, please, while people are speaking? Thank you. Councillor Richardson, please.
The written responses, as I said earlier, the, in the question about the White Paper, there'll be a letter setting out more details and once received, then we'll consider the implications of how we involve our members taking actions forward. But personally, I'd just like to put a couple of things straight. I don't believe we spend £3 million on councils every three years. At my best calculation, I think it's 2.1. We do stand alone, we are stood alone. We do stand alone, we are stood alone, we are financially solvent, and we are making tough decisions to stay that way. This council does represent its residents, and I'm one of which that comes from Redcar and Cleveland. I'm not from Yorkshire, I never was, and it's never been on my address. Cleveland is recognised by plenty of people as its home, and I don't know thousands of residents who'd like to see it abolished. So I don't think that represents everybody or our constituents. And in answer to your question, no, I won't be writing any such letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question?
I think the answer was pretty clear, wasn't it? We'll be serving our own interests rather than the residents. I will move on to the next question.
Watch. Right, move on to the next one then. Question 11, councillor Leroy to councillor Richardson.
Yeah. So, under the previous administration, a climate emergency was declared by Redcar and Cleveland and a target of carbon neutrality or net zero at 2030. Since then, a 400,000-tonne carbon-emitting Wilton 11 incinerator has been opened, cynically under the same greenwashing previous administration. And you, as the new leader or deputy leader, and now a supporter, perhaps not in your case a supporter, but certainly the leader who is absent and unable to defend himself, of an additional 450,000-tonne carbon-emitting Tees Valley Energy Recovery Facility incinerator at Grangestown, and yet another in Grangestown. The contract for the latter will run up to 30 years. There's an option in there to go to 30 based on waste and lack of guarantees on waste volumes. Redcar and Cleveland, unless you take responsibility for your actions collectively as a labour group, may I add, because I understand the whiff implication that you're under, you're never going to hit this 2030 target. You won't even hit the 2050 target. So I'm asking you either to oppose the incinerators with me or announce to the public that you've scrapped, and it's with a heavy heart, as I'm an environmentalist, but you've scrapped the 2030 carbon-zero deadline as you do not share the climate aspirations of your own senior political party and that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Richardson, please.
I wasn't aware. I think he was an avid supporter of the incinerator, only that he was balancing the financial situation of this council with the waste that we have to get rid of. And one of the solutions, which is still to be considered in April or May of this year, is to have a council-owned facility rather than being subject to whatever costs private industry will inflict on us with short contracts. The decarbonisation of industry falls within the remit of TVCA, and that organisation's plans are to deliver net zero by 2040. Redcar and Cleveland's council score, one and two carbon emissions have dropped significantly as a result of a concerted effort on the part of successive administrations. In 2014, the council emitted around 22,000 tonnes per annum. At the conclusion of this financial year, we hope to be below 5,000 tonnes of CO2 emitted, a reduction of 77% in a 10-year period. Our current trajectory is to be a carbon-neutral organisation by 2030. Energy recovery is a low-carbon solution for the treatment of residual waste compared with landfill. And for context, 200kg, 200 kg of CO2e, carbon dioxide equivalent, on average is saved for every tonne of residual waste sent to energy recovery instead of landfill, although the relative performance can vary within a range of specific local circumstances. With the T, with the waste-to-energy recovery, utilising the latest technology and being a newly constructed facility, it will be relatively more efficient than older existing facilities. In future, potentially exploring heat as well as electricity will increase the plant's efficiency, improving its performance, and while carbon capture and storage technology holds the potential to mitigate remaining net emissions, the TVRF has been designed to be carbon capture-ready, which will potentially allow the deployment of carbon capture technology, enabling the facility to actively remove more carbon than it emits. Removing as many plastic-based materials as possible from the residual waste stream will also help reduce the carbon emissions from energy recovery, and this will more effectively be achieved through greater waste avoidance and improved recycling performance, which residents will play a significant role for in helping to deliver. And I think it's worth mentioning that there are other private companies who want to build incinerators on Tees Works should this council not go ahead, which we have no control over. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question, councillor Leroy?
Yes, unfortunately, we may not have any control over that if the government has its ways and removes local objections to planning applications. However, the national government is striding towards carbon neutrality, 81% reduction before 2035, and it would be useful if the council would follow suit. Very quickly, in terms of landfill and the comparisons given out by the corporate incinerator, energy-from-waste greenwashing corporate elite, is that it is a physical impossibility for landfill to produce more carbon dioxide than an incinerator because of the plastic content. It's a physical impossibility. That figure that keeps getting quoted to us is not true. Finally, I'd just like to point out about the private incinerators and the movement away, and I hope that my email that I sent previously and a chain to you all was enlightening in terms of who the owners are of these incinerators, private investment, private equity firms, and then, of course, an individual from Mexico, no less. Now, if we're not wanting to put public funds into their pockets, which I guess we're not, let's avoid that scenario. This is my, this is the roundup now. I had email exchanges and telephone conversations with respective members from different authorities involved in the Tees Valley ERF. The Tees side councils clearly don't think that this is a great idea to have an incinerator on their doorstep. However, the attitude was marked and different from both Durham and Newcastle, who, to be frank, were pretentious on their calls and in their emails. And I had the impression that they looked down on us as people from Redcar, as though we are second-class citizens, and it's not on that we accept their rubbish. And so I would like the deputy leader in this instance to assure me that in those negotiations, that Redcar is not talked down and is not considered to be the dumping ground of a Newcastle and Durham metropolitan elite.
Councillor Leroy, councillor Richardson, sorry.
Sure how to answer that question. I don't think there was one, but all I will say is we've... Because in the initial scoping of this whole project, Tees Works was identified as the best place, and I wasn't involved in that, to build a multi-council incinerator. Yes, I would fight for our residents' interests and have spent a great deal of time looking at any viable alternatives, options that are working at scale that we could use, because nobody wants landfill or any other currently proposed solution. But we do have waste and our residents do produce it, and it has to go somewhere. So I think, I think that might answer the question, but I'm not sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to question 12, councillor Leroy to councillor Sivers, please.
Yeah, thank you. I personally don't want my nine-year-old inhaling the waste of Sunderland and Newcastle. I do not.
Can we just go to the question, please?
Question 12. Councillor Sivers, last half-term, I was made aware of parents receiving warnings of local schools. In one case, a child had an attendance of 94.9% for the half-term after the school sent the child home for two days due to being ill at school. It was the school's policy that children should stay off school for two days ill at school. So hitting the 95% attendance figure was impossible, as two days in the half-term was over 5%. An absence completely due to the policies of the school and the government. This is one personal story, but there are hundreds of others every half-term. Your child is ill, but as a parent, you feel compel to send them to school due to authoritarian rules around state school attendance. Note, state school attendance, not private. Is the cabinet member aware of the draconian rules around school attendance and their implications on infection in the wider community and the unnecessary pressure being put on responsible parents?
Councillor Sivers, please.
Of course, we no longer oversee management of schools directly, but attendance is a top priority for all schools, and they obviously want 100% attendance. But 95% is the minimum expectation that's set by the Department of Education. And there's been a national concern about attendance since Covid, of course, and it's dropped off all over. And the Department of Education guidance states that sending a letter to parents or carers to let them know that their child is close to or below the desired 95% or 95% target is advisable for schools.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do before we can all go and have a Merry Christmas. So, final one. I've become increasingly aware of the gap between state and private education as the VAT on fees debate has escalated. And I'd be interested in the cabinet positions members take on the other advantages in terms of social mobility that are afforded through a private education, which aren't offered in the state education. I would draw a parallel with my own, where I didn't learn about something called the velvet drainpipe, which is a network of connections between those who are privileged, which enables them to get top positions in industries such as my own when they have less experience and less qualifications. So how are we ever going to come that bridge? I don't believe that the VAT on school fees would be the unique answer to that.
Councillor Sivers?
It was like an old, new question to me, Tristan, as not really related to attendance at all. And, but, I mean, and I obviously, I agree with you on that, that it's shocking that the difference in opportunities. I mean, it's in the Times last week, you know, the league table of schools, and they're all in London, and private schools, aren't they? I wanted, so I'm going to obtusely answer you by talking about attendance, because that was what the question was about. You know, attendance is everyone's business, and we all need to get involved in that. We've had this problem with attendance since, since Covid, and it is poorest in some of our poorest areas. So that, you know, that's one way that state schools can try and bridge that gap, is to make sure that people attend so that they can develop the skills and enhance their life chances. And kids not attending leads to antisocial behaviour, potentially drawn into criminality and counter lines and so on. And that's the worst thing that can happen to our kids, isn't it? You know, that, that won't fill the gap. So I think that, you know, your original question was about attendance, and I think that's something that we all should be really concerned with here, because it'll enhance the life chances and try to bridge that gap between our state school students and those in private school, to come back to your different question. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Have a, have a great Christmas and a new year, and the meeting's now closed. Thank you.